Hi, thank you, John Highway 157, Oak Street. I have a question about the road diet. It was mentioned earlier about committees. Was there a committee for the road diet? That that came together to discuss the road diet? By chance, no, no committee for the road diet. But.
Planning.
Okay, okay, very good, planning. And then at that committee, did you all decide that that meeting was going to take place at the library? Where public comment was made? Did that happen in the planning meeting?
That would be a question for Councilman Morrissey.
What, why didn't you hear?
Was there a discussion about the meeting at the library? Did the planning commission bring forward that meeting at the library?
I don't remember.
Okay. Is there?
Dave, do you remember?
Mm-hmm.
Did it stop by?
No, this is part of the time.
So, at the next council meeting, Alan Beaker plans on providing an update on that road diet process, both written and be here to answer questions. So, there is no additional meeting scheduled at that, at this point. But at the next meeting, we'll have his report and be able to ask him questions.
Okay, thank you for that. Do you know if that project or the grant for that project has actually been moved forward? Is the application happening for that project despite what the public comment was in the library meeting?
Yes, the application was submitted.
Okay, so, and the committee, the planning committee was aware of that as well?
The application was submitted before the library meeting.
Before the library meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was submitted at the meeting.
Oh, not the, sorry, the council approved it before the meeting. It was submitted after the meeting. My apologies.
Oh, that's okay. I was just trying to figure out the proper channel since we've been talking a lot about committees and public hearings, and I just want to be sure that there's going to be another opportunity for the public to discuss this road diet proposition? In light of the fact that that's also going to, I believe the number I heard was twenty percent would be on the taxpayers? When we're talking about pricing for getting the roads fixed that I refuse to drive down, that we're not then burdening people with more taxes? And I don't envy any of your positions, but when you're, you know, throwing the word like disingenuous around, I just want to be sure that we're very transparent about what's going forward with this road diet. That's all I am here for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I have been hit with a special assessment of one of my properties, and I would not even think about coming back and saying I expect to get money back because I understand that policies change. I'm very excited about the communication on the board because I found out the hard way that you actually have committees, and that's where decisions are made, and then it's like rubber stamped in the city council, which was rather disappointing when I found that out. So, bringing things up, I'm thrilled, Josh. I mean, making suggestions and allowing us to hear it because I have no doubt that the people embarrassed you would love to have that road done. And if they didn't get hit with five thousand dollars, and the only reason it was only five thousand dollars is because it had a cap on it, which is what I found out on one of my other properties, they would probably be a heck of a lot more open to having the road done because two thousand dollars is a lot easier to come up with than five thousand dollars or twenty-five hundred or three thousand. It's just not knowing what you're going to get hit with and assuming the worst-case scenario is the problem. So, talking about it like this allows us as citizenry to be more informed and having, and really seeing the process of what you guys have to go through because I wouldn't want your job for anything, okay? And going back and forth and everybody participating and giving their, and asking questions so that we can see what the process is so we really do understand it because we don't see the committees. Yeah, you can go to these committees, but they're not as publicized, and this is where a lot of people think that they need to come to get information, and it shouldn't be just a rubber stamp. So, fight away, argue, throw it out there so that the rest of us can have an opportunity to hear how the process works. And I love the fact that you're all, every one of you are considering what the citizens want. But I don't think you understand that what Josh did and what some of the other council members did is exactly what we want to see is that you're fighting for us and you're trying to come up with ways to still get the roads done because we all want the roads done. And doing it, keeping the citizens in mind and understanding that it's a struggle out here to come up with this money, but we want to be part of the process. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
David Hamilton, six six seven South Howell. I want to say thank you. Dave, engineers, BPU, you all do invaluable work. And, and I appreciate that you're there doing it. I hope very much that we understand that our representatives who, who operate and vote for the budget are sitting around you. Your management is appreciated. It should be management, not dictation. Certainly not telling us that there's going to be a road diet happening on Broad Street because the state has some cash available for us. We need to deliberate. I need to be able to do my budget based on our voting, your voting, council members. We vote for you. I can't vote for Mr. Mackey or unvote for him if his ROI is higher than his, his cost. I trust you all to do that. That's why we vote for you. And I appreciate, again, not to devalue your work, Mr. Mackey, but we need our budget managed by our representatives, not by the managers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Jacob Pitts, fifty-three Maury Street. I'm just here because I really appreciate a little more police presence on Howell Street, especially on the south end of town there. People go flying over the hill by the hub. I have a two-year-old, I have another one on the way. I would like them not to be smushed. And it would be really cool if we could get just a little more presence. I mean, you can use my driveway at BPU, we just, it's getting to the point where it's been a little ridiculous as late even, just people going fifty, sixty miles an hour trying to get up that hill or coming into town. It'd be really appreciated if we could have something done on that. And that'd be it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Pooley, Berry Street, I love Berry Street. So, I just want to clarify, so now that it's been tabled, I mean, we protested three times in writing. In the first two times, it was hazily illegitimate, easily legitimate. I understand the city charter itself is confused. Now, we wait until April first, I believe, and then you will have numbers per Mr. Wolfram's suggestion about what we actually would owe. And then we would protest again if we want, or how is that?
The protests have been brought to a public hearing, they're valid.
Okay, so, so if you've, you've tabled the motions and now you're going to redo based on the negotiations, maybe, of this? And, and then you have to vote seven, oh, you still have to vote seven votes? Is that what you're saying, in April?
I believe so, yes.
Same public hearing?
Yes, and, and the charter simply provides that if, at or before the assess, the approval of the assessment, someone makes a written objection, that's the objection, right? So, it doesn't matter the discussion about whether something was invalid or not. And with the, the clear, plain language of the charter and the ordinance, if it was at or before, when the assessment was approved and they projected, that's a valid objection. Even if they don't know the detail, just the fact that they're, that they know that there's going to be a consideration of a special assessment is enough to make it an objection. Once they've done that, once you have more than fifty percent before the assessment district is approved, that objection stays.
Thank you.
Unless somebody were to withdraw.
Sorry, Tim.
You're good, thank you. I just wanted to say as well that I really stand with CJ that even though I don't really understand most of what just happened, I really, I think that's good for you to talk about those things. And I hope that you guys find a way to reduce SADs for everyone, including Berry Street, in the future. So, I hope that you can bring it down and make it eventually go away. Thank you very much.
Hi.
Hi, I just want to clarify one thing. There will be one more public hearing if.
Yes.
The district is approved.
That's right.
And the purpose of that public hearing is for the individual taxpayers to appeal their individual assessment.
Thank you, Ken. The podium is open.
Richard Smith, fifty-three South Broad. I'm, I'm bringing up the Mitchell Building, the Mitchell Library Building. It hasn't been heard of for some months now. Back last fall, I approached Jason about getting a firm bid to do some work on the basement. And we worked up some, some information to send out for bids so that we could have some contractors look at what we needed to be done so we could have an idea. There are, there's a group of people that want to put up a fundraiser, but how much of a fundraiser do they need? We don't know. Jeff there, I think his name is, he, he put together a proposal for a, a state funds, you know, over a year ago, a year and a half ago. And the bid, they, a contractor said repair the, repair the basement, forty thousand, five hundred dollars. That was his bid, repair the basement, forty thousand. I don't know if that consisted of, does any, and nobody could tell me. Anyway, so I put this together, I gave it to Jason. He looked at it, he was going to look at it and see what else it needed. And he called me back and said, we can't send this in, that we can't put this out for bids because it needs to be done by an engineer. And I didn't understand that, I hadn't. So, I thought I would go back to one of the committees to get an engineer to look at this basement that was built in eighteen sixty-eight. But it goes, I had a page and a half of things that I knew needed to be done in that basement. And so far, we can't, can't, I can't call in, I can't call somebody because it's city property. And so, the city has to do this, they're the, have to. And I thought Jason could do it since he's a department, a public works manager, and he's responsible for the buildings. And I'd just like to see some action on it so that we can tell these ladies we need this amount of money to do this project. We're not going to get two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on one deal, but at least get a start because the city doesn't have any money to take care of their buildings. And that's all I'm asking for, somebody in this city council. Councilman Suchet raised hell with us because, he said, well, you raised hell, and I said, you're going to get money, but you never do it. He doesn't know how much money has came in because the money that comes in doesn't come to the city. It comes to if I will one seat people. And we try to keep that money so we can maintain the services at the Mitchell Building.
Thank you, Richard. Councilman Flynn, oh, I'm sorry, Brunz and, oh, I just started up. Wolfram, would you continue to discuss that community development?
Yes, we had discussed that back in our meeting in February, and we can continue to do that.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. The podium is still open.
Hello, Jeff Fazikis. I would like to congratulate everyone for coming out. I started my venture in Hillsdale with a sidewalk tax, which cost me thirty-nine thousand dollars. And again, was kind of railroaded into it way back when. So, it's nice to see actual neighbors show up because when I showed up here, no one showed up, unfortunately. One thing I would like to ask is council to get a little bit more involved. I understand we have our day-to-day business that we do, and this is an extra thing that you're doing. And as citizens, I appreciate that. But I don't know if you know this or not, but there's lots of padding in your budget. For example, a council's budget is twenty-four thousand dollars approximately a year. There's four thousand dollars in padding in the last four years on average. It's just sitting there. Now, I understand that things go over, and there has to be some. But on a twenty-four thousand dollar budget, four thousand dollar padding seems to be kind of excessive. And I don't know if the finance committees, doesn't seem to ever really shore up the budget, look at the budget. I know that the city staff does, and Dave does a very good job with that. But again, what does finance do with it? They just check off the marks? I don't know if they actually balance up and in multiple meetings? Just curious. Something that's something we should be looking at. Again, the airport situation, a lot of people brought up a lot of good facts today, which I think should be taken into effect and looked at. When is, when is the airport going to be settled? Or are we going to keep throwing money? I know that we talked about the, the budget, not the budget, excuse me, the hangers. And again, I've talked to a lot of people that fly. Yes, it's cheaper to go somewhere else, but at fifty dollars a month, how many people are going to go thirty minutes away to fly a hundred thousand dollar plane? They're not. They're going to stay local because it's closer. So, that's what I have for you today, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I really enjoyed the conversation today. I liked that, you know, that you brought something up, and Wolfram, you had an awesome idea, and the conversation going back and forth, to be able to actually hear that you guys really care about it. So, I really appreciate that. CJ did a great job, so I'm not going to repeat all that. We do have new money coming in from the college also, so that's more new money coming in. And I'm not against the airport. I know we have to keep it up and everything. But I look at the budgets, every time those things, financial stuff come out, you know, we have, the pilots have a complimentary crew car. We have coffee, snacks, newspapers. You know, there's a lot of, lot of extra stuff going to the airport. Let's trim the fat. You guys could have raised the rates. So, I'm not against the airport, I want the airport to be self-sufficient. If that gets done, then it's more money back in the regular budget. I mean, I just found out reading the other day that we have nine hundred and fifty dollars that we rent a fuel truck to fuel the planes. Well, then you have to buy the fuel to do the fuel truck. So, you make a thousand dollars in fuel sales, you right off the bat for that month, you've got to take off nine hundred and fifty that you rented the fuel truck to fuel the planes and then the fuel to go on the plane. So, I'm thinking that fuel truck's about eleven hundred. I don't know if the fuel truck is for the, the jet fuel, but I do know people who are in the industry that the truck goes to the plane and fuels it. So, where is that? Everyone's been asking for a long time, where is the budget? I mean, I'd like to see how the airport is going to be self-sufficient. That's not, not out there. And the chip seal, back in May thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four, the city applied for a grant for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do chip seal on a bunch of roads here in Hillsdale, some of the side streets. Did that grant ever get turned in? Did we get turned down for the grant? I don't know, I, I couldn't find any of the minutes that said that. But that was May thirtieth. I just wondered if that, if that chip seal, because we're not doing any chip seal. We're budgeting for all these reconstructions. And some roads aren't going to get to, like you said, for forty years. Why not just go ahead and chip seal them and at least make it so that, you know, the front end of my truck isn't, need realignment, you know, all the time? Thanks.
Thank you.
Scott Sessions, one oh two, Coles Street Circle. You can't run over ten, ten o'clock, so you're going to have to vote or extend the meeting as far as I know. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Actually, the president says that you cannot begin consideration of any matter on the agenda or any issues how the government is handling.
Thank you. No, no more items, podium is still open.
I'm going to support the gentleman on Maury Street. I'm on Howell lot, forty-two Howell. That's a school zone right there. And cars just fly down there all the time going south of town. That and the school zones, I don't, I see the police are out on, at the old gas station, old Admiral Gas Station, but they need to be controlling like some of the school zones. Like, I know the speed limits are like till four o'clock. And I know a lot of times people like Spring Street go out, Spring Street. Mechanic Street's a bad one, it's got a school zone there. I don't, never see the police setting out there doing that radar or anything, but Howell is a bad street. I do think that was a good conversation you guys had. The committee meetings are all posted on the city website, so they are out there. The only thing I wish you guys would push them for is to get their meetings out there because they don't get their meeting minutes out there at all. And I mean, you can look at stuff and there's no minutes there, so who knows what was on? And I think that's good, I try to read that stuff. One thing I did read, the Economic Development Commission, and I called Sam about it. His, I had his phone number on the, there's a bulletin in there on the City of Hillsdale. And his, his phone number was the phone number that's no longer used for the outages for the BPU. So, why, I don't know. I finally did get a hold of him. With that being said, that little bulletin, I think is very hypocritical. It talked, you've got a little town here of eighty-five hundred people. It's got three colleges in it. How many other towns aside have three colleges? The only one in the bulletin that talked about, of course, was the college, of course. And it only talked about one private school also, which you've got more than one private school in this town, too. Stuff is too, like I said, it's too hypocritical. People think the sun rises and sets in one little place, but it doesn't. It's all the people in this town. If you look at the people that go to college from Hillsdale, how many of them could actually afford to go to Hillsdale College? I mean, these other colleges or trades are great. I mean, that's what we need. I mean, it's great that Hillsdale's a great college and they have people listening to the president and all that stuff, but not everybody can afford that, and we should all understand that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any more public comment?
Mr. Mayor.
Let's, let's wait till after the meeting, if you don't mind.
I just want to invite Airport, come to the meeting. I'm on the committee.
I will discuss that in council comment, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, city managers report.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Just a few things I want to mention. So, we do have the March Board of Review meetings coming up. While the Board of Review will meet to hear appeals on the twenty-twenty-five assessed and taxable values on the following dates, Monday, March tenth, from nine AM to three PM. Tuesday, March eleventh, from three PM to nine PM. And this is an open meeting to be held in the second floor in the conference room at City Hall. Appointments are recommended but not required. Second, Aldi will be having their grand opening on March thirteenth, Thursday. So, the new Aldi supermarket will be open then to the public. So, I know a lot of people are excited about that. The spring cemetery cleanup, the annual spring cleanup at Lakeview and Old Grove Cemetery is scheduled for, to begin Monday, March seventeenth. Any remaining seasonal or temporary decorations, grave blankets, loose items, or any item determined to be in poor condition will be discarded by the city if, if they're not moved by then. If you have any sentimental items or things you would like to preserve, please remove the items for safekeeping before Sunday, March sixteenth. Your returned items can be placed at either cemetery after March twenty-ninth if you want to put something back. Again, there will be no curbside leaf collection this spring. In regards to the budget, so the, at the April seventh meeting is when the council will be presented with the budget. We're looking at, for council meetings, April seventeenth and April twenty-fourth. And I believe on, on all those meeting dates, the finance director will be here to discuss the budgets, as well as on the seventeenth and twenty-fourth, the department heads will be here to answer their questions on their specific budgets as well. So, in the first day, we'll have a certain number of departments, and the second day, we'll have the second set that I indicated to on the first day.
Mr. Mackey, when, when will we know which budgets are being discussed on which days?
We will probably know that on that first meeting in April. I have not seen the, the specific delineation of the departments from the finance director yet. Also, just for, for council, we do have the Water and Sewer Department Facility Tour on the fifteenth for the council members. I know many of you have, are SVP for that. We will be using, or plan to use, the Diver Ride Bus so we can get everyone in the same vehicle to go to locations. And that is all I have. I know Mayor Proton Palladino wants to talk about the airport and potentially having a tour there at a, at a date in the future, so I would just.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey, I appreciate it. Any comments or questions for the manager? Yes, Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Mr. Mackey, so, I have a family emergency that I'm going to be going out of town this weekend, and I will be gone on the tenth and eleventh. Now, I'm not protesting my own taxes, but if, is there an avenue for our constituents if something happens where they can't be there on those days to oppose?
Yes, there is, so I'll let Kim manage her directly.
Yeah, so, property owners can file an appeal in writing. They can email it to assessor@cityofhillsdale.org. There is a petition form that they need to fill out. That form is available online at the State Tax Commission website, or they can contact our office and we'll email it to them.
Thank you. Thank you, Ken. Councilman Flynn.
Two questions for Dave. First of all, you mentioned that leaf pickup will not happen this spring. I've had some people ask, will brush pickup happen this spring?
Yes.
And Jason, do we have dates for that? Or how will that, how will people know when to have their brush out and buy?
It should be going out the end of this month. It would be the first full week of April, that is scheduled. So, that will go out, have Sam, where you have our WCSR spotlight, and they'll go down the C-Face page as well.
Okay, so the brush, pretty much the first week of April, first full week of April?
First full week, yeah.
And my second question for the city manager, briefly, because I know we're past the ten o'clock, but I've had a lot of people ask me about the CL Red Diver Ride, or not Diver Ride, the Dawn Theater thing, I guess, I'm going to apologize for the, the correct word, but they no longer want to oversee or manage the Dawn Theater? Could you explain, because I thought that was a lengthy contract that they were supposed to be a part of that, and now they don't want to be a part of that? And I've had several people ask.
Sure. So, that, that, it was a lengthy contract. They approached TIPA and said that they would like to cancel that contract because it's, the contract is with TIPA. So, TIPA is speaking about that with them. I, I'm not sure what the plans are moving forward, and I know TIPA's working on it. So, that will probably be coming out here in the next. So, that will probably be coming out here in the next several weeks.
Is there any money involved in that? Or is that, I mean, are we going to lose any money or anything?
I don't, it's all Tifa. Yeah, it's, it's all, it's all Tifa.
Okay.
It doesn't affect us.
Okay, okay. Just, there's a lot of confusion out there, and I just want to be able to give the correct answer.
No, they're, they're like, Drew, Drew Gouzer is working on it with, with CL. So, they're negotiating, it's a different management style, or a different management firm may be overseeing the Dawn Theater.
Okay.
So.
And to be clear, Tifa is not losing any money either?
No, no, no. Nobody's losing any money.
But also to be clear, and I apologize for not knowing this, but a lot of people are asking, who exactly owns the Dawn Theater?
Tifa.
Tifa still owns the Dawn Theater. Okay, thank you.
Not only are they not losing money, looks like they might get a pretty good deal.
Well, hopefully.
Hopefully. That meeting is Friday, March seventh, at eight AM here or in the second floor conference room for the Tifa targeted development. They'll continue discussing that. Thank you. Okay. All set, Councilman. The only thing I was going to say is I've requested that the manager and the airport manager and the city manager schedule a tour of the airport that will be available to everyone. Mr. Hamilton, when is the airport advisory committee? Do you have one scheduled?
I don't have the, any answer to that right now.
Okay, but you can go to the airport advisory committee to learn about it. And the tour, they probably took me around for two, two and a half hours, answered a hundred questions. And hopefully, that'll be available to the public in the coming, I would assume, month or two. And we will advertise that at the time. Any other council comments? Councilman Soha.
I just wanted to say, I don't think you're disingenuous, Mayor Protown. Maybe I made a bad choice of words.
I appreciate that.
I was just frustrated that, I can't believe that within the last two weeks you had this idea, you know? So, if, if you had the idea when we first amended the rules, how we've appreciated having been presented then, or as some of our constituents mentioned, why didn't you present it at the Monroe Street at the beginning? You know, it just seems like it was called in favor to you because you may have friends or colleagues that live on Berry Street. I don't know, that's an assumption I'm not. But that's just the appearance I had in my mind why maybe I said disingenuous. I don't think you're disingenuous, I think you are really trying to do the best as you see for the city to move forward. That being said, I would appreciate if we do make an amendment to how we do assessments, counsel, or our constituents to give us feedback through the email, phone calls. All of our members, all of our emails are on the website. It was suggested out there that lower payments would be acceptable. Then we'll, let's find that solution and amend the rules again and move forward that way. And also, just a point of order for council. I believe it's in our rules that public comments just comment, and we're supposed to sit back and listen, and then in a moment like this or something, we can address the question. But it's, traditionally, we haven't been back and forth, although there's always exceptions that we can always make at your ask. But that's just traditionally during public comment, both at the beginning of the meeting, during the special assessment, public hearings, and at the end of the meeting. Comments are supposed to just be directed at council, where to receive them, make any notes as necessary, and then we address them, and we discuss it amongst ourselves.
Thank you, Councilman Soha, I appreciate that. The council rules of procedure, I've actually been rereading them and offering amendments to the ONG committee. It does actually say that the presiding officer can recognize anyone. It's my preference that we actually just respond to the questions at the time. I think we owe that to our citizens. If council wants to amend the rules of procedure, we can make it so it is just a public comment. But my, my preference is that we answer at the time as long as they understand that that's part of their three minutes. Yes, thank you, Councilman Soha.
I appreciate the clarification, because I, I understood that that was already, did I misunderstand that? I thought that our rules already stated that we're not supposed to engage during that. And if I'm wrong, then I retract my statement. Although you always have purview of Mayor Protown to conduct a meeting at your pleasure, so.
Councilman Wolfram.
I guess I would like to request, and I don't know who to request it from, but that the staff draft some language to put into the new, have a new special assessment district language that would have the provision that people would receive their, receive how much their liability would be. And then we vote, then they could have a decision over a certain amount of time in order to say they don't want to do it or not, so that we would have an amendment to that. Like I said,